Okay, so it's, so I only. No, so I.
I'll call this special meeting of the Issaquah City Council to order on October the 13th, 2014, and ask those who would like to join myself and the council in the pledge allegiance to please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving now to audience comments. Citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into our, into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so when recognized. When recognized, please approach the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. With that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak?
Yes, Cynthia Lesford. Cynthia Lesford, 2408 Northwest Harmony Way in Issaquah. My question to the board is, why do we have these public comments? I'm sure that it's because we are mandated by the state, or we wouldn't be holding them. Or maybe it's to give the public a false sense that their public officials are listening to them. Whatever the reason, it appears to me that the council members of this board do not listen to the public comment, and I would venture to feel, to say that the public feels the same way. Why else would the same people come to different meetings and say the same thing? Obviously, they feel that there is no acknowledgement of their words being heard. I've been living in Issaquah for about a year and a half and have attended quite a number of council committee members, meetings. The conclusion is that the residents of Issaquah's concerns are either not being heard or not important enough to be acknowledged after public comment. I've also concluded that the council gives the appearance that their mind has already been made up before the public gets their voice, gets to voice their opinion. Something that's very irritating to me, and I am sure to others in your audience, is the timekeeper. Now, I realize that you do not want a speaker who talks all night, but it seems that just when a lawyer or a traffic expert is getting into the substance of their presentation, the timekeeper chimes in with 45 seconds. To me, this is saying, shut up and sit down. It is rude and distracting, the train of the thought of the presenter. Many people who come in front of this council need to explain in layman's terms very detailed information so that the board members and the audience understand. Giving these experts an extra minute would be kind consideration. At a past council meeting, the council claimed that they had a goal to involve the public more. Mayor Butler felt that the council had met that goal, but a council member stated that there had not been any criteria to make a basis against. I agree that if a council is going to create goals, they need to keep metrics, and I believe a metric for the goal to involve the public would be how many times a person comes in front of the council with the same information. If they have to repeat themselves, then you have not met that goal. I would like to propose two changes to your public comment process. Number one, instead of the timekeeper yelling out the rest of the time, the council would invest in three light bulbs or three large colored cards. Green for "go ahead and talk," yellow for "you have one minute left," and red "it's time to sit down." After the five minutes, the timekeeper can interrupt the speaker by thanking them kindly for their comment. Number two, after the mayor has closed the public comment, have him read a list of the public concerns, maybe a line or two description. Then put the concerns out for council discussion. The council may not agree with the resident's concerns, but the resident will go home knowing that he or she had been listened to.
Thank you. I neglected to, to say that other than normal comments like we just heard, audience comments will be restricted to the development agreement and not the other items since the public hearing has been closed. So on any other subject that you desire to speak on, that is all right unless it is directed to the development agreement itself. And for the previous speaker, thank you very, very much for those suggestions. Many places where I've been, they use the red, yellow, and green light as an indicator, and we will be considering your two suggestions. Typically, I don't respond to public comments, but in this case, there seemed to be quite a bit of emotion behind that, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. With that, has anyone else signed up to speak?
No.
Mr. Kapler.
Thank you. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Now, I was a little confused at what you just, we can speak to the development agreement.
You can speak to the development agreement.
That's what I thought, that's what I was hoping I was hearing. Thank you. And thank you for the council for the extra time put in on this. It's well worth it, and I think the agreement has been significantly improved. Now, admittedly, I've been a broken record and been saying the same thing for a number of meetings, so I can understand some, you know, citizen concerns would be that he's been saying the same thing for a long time, but we have got some great resolutions on several of those topics, so thank you. One of the topics is trails. Now, one is, in somewhat not develop, we should not need any of the $150,000 except for a couple of signs and the trail corridor around, on city property, around the vet hospital to get from under the Stinky Bridge to the State Park Trail. That would be a very simple matter. It would be great because we'd get, stop the homeless encampments in there with all the garbage and the fire issues that are concerned to the State Park as well as to the city, and it would be good, good for the creek actually to have more involvement in that area watching the creek than, than it is now. One, I know we want to pass this tonight, and it's 187 pages or something. It seems like it would be a reasonable thing to do is get an agreement between Costco and the city to kind of get this in a more workable package. The, the people are going to have to deal with this potentially in year 29 or year 30 deserve better than, than the package as it's been put together. And this kind of goes back to my longstanding concern about everything significant happening on development agreements and how hard it is for staff and the rest and citizens in the council to have different code, different language and everything for every, for different developments. So I think getting together and cleaning up this thing in a new document would be great for the, the long term. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening desiring to speak? Ms. Marsh?
My name's Connie Marsh. I have a store at 1175 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite V11, and it's Halloween. I also live in town. So, as usual, the Costco development agreement was difficult, as all the development agreements are difficult, and we've had a lot of conversations in my house about the concept of balance of power. And you have a small town and you have very large corporation. So one of the things that happens, and we, Cory and I have both seen happen in towns that we've lived, you get very large corporations and they have tremendous influence on towns. And so that can be great, and if something happens, it can be awful. And so when we read these agreements and we think about it, it's like, it's our community. How do we ensure that this very large corporation with tremendous amounts of power can have beneficial influence to our community? Because we live our small lives talking to each other and saying hi to our neighbors and, and having these minimal interactions, which actually end up being some of the most powerful things you can do in life. How do you change a person's day? And I know, I feel that that is just as valuable as being an enormous corporation. Now, finances override politics, towns need money, so when this city decides it wants to make Costco such a large part of it, it seems oh so important to ensure that you don't lose the community while you're negotiating that agreement, and it's very difficult. And I am very proud of the staff and council members who've worked hard to ensure that the community can get as much as they can out of this agreement. I feel like Costco is getting like this amazing bonus agreement, and the community is getting as much as the city could do wanting Costco. Very hard negotiation. So I want to say that as painful as I am to many most of the time, I appreciate all the efforts that go in to these complex negotiations and the endless writing and trying to get seven of you on a page. I don't like the feeling that we're going to do this to anyone who comes to the table with large amounts of money, and that concerns me. So the next step is to try to figure out how we're going to make the central Issaquah plan actually be what Charles said you wanted it to be only a year ago, or adjust it to be something else that's equally good. But don't forget that you committed to benefits for our community in that plan because we said we would agree to adopt this tremendous increase in density that is being allowed. And so as usual, I'm torn. Costco's an awesome company that can bring many things to Issaquah, and my fear that Issaquah can lose its soul to this same awesomeness. So next step in my mind is to yet again gather together and figure out how we're going to combine the threads of all of these things together to make an even better community, which is probably even more complicated than this Costco development agreement. So thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Seeing no one, then audience comments are closed, and we will move to agenda items. There is one, one item on our agenda, Agenda Bill 6780, Costco Corporate Headquarters Development Agreement and Sunset of a Portion of the Pickering Place Master Site Plan. We'll begin with a staff presentation, and I see Mr. Niven approaching the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Keith Niven with Economic Development. This evening, we have our third meeting to talk about the Costco Development Agreement and the major amendment to the Pickering Place Master Site Plan. Just to go through a slide that you guys have seen a few times, I'm going to try and not duplicate all of the slides. So Costco International Headquarters, 47 acres, approximately 700,000 square feet, developed under the Pickering Place Master Site Plan. What you have in front of you this evening is an agenda bill with two new documents. The development agreement itself has not changed, but there are two documents that were included as attachments to the agenda bill. The first one, the one on the left, is an updated memo of adjustments, and you can see the red lines that were part of the previous discussion, and the update for October 9th included some additional green line edits that were part of my presentation last, last council meeting. The document on the right, which says Exhibit B, which is actually Exhibit H to the agenda bill, sorry about that. What that has is three columns. It's a table. It's multiple pages, and that represents the questions that you guys asked following the last council meeting. The first column is your question, the second column is a discussion of that question, and the third column is how it impacted the draft development agreement. And so what you guys kind of came back to me with following the last meeting is basically there were 13 different kind of areas of questions and clarifications that you sought, and they're represented here in this table. A lot of conversation about leased space and if the development agreement should extend to leased property, some clarifications in Exhibit E, which is defined terms, and whether or not those are in addition to the central Issaquah Plan design and development standards, or do they replace things, and so we clarified that. There was a question about precedents and whether or not the interpretations and modifications that would be, that were proposed with this development agreement could be used on other central Issaquah Plan properties. We needed to add, number four, a section on, since sustainability was added, number 12, we thought that one of the things that would need to come back to the city council would be if there were some material changes to the sustainability section, since that was such an important piece for the city council. Number five, there was a question on one of the interpretations, and it really was not an interpretation, so we restructured a section to be clear that, that basically buildings under 150,000 square feet would not go to the Development Commission, and that was not an interpretation under this development agreement. That was actually what's in the central Issaquah Plan. There were some questions about the 10th Avenue sidewalk or pedestrian way trigger, what would actually get that to happen? And, you know, where we landed was because there's some safety issues about putting a sidewalk next to the gas station and how that slip ramp works on 10th Avenue, we added some clearer language about when we would initiate a conversation with Costco about that issue and, and actually look at some designs. There was some question about air rights, and that's relating to the sky bridge that goes over Lake Drive. There were some questions about concurrency, questions about the density bonus, floor area ratio. Trail, and as we heard from the public earlier, the trail has been brought up basically at every council committee, Development Commission, and City Council meeting. Sustainability was a big conversation point at the last council hearing, and there was some conversation about a revision to the land plan, looking a little bit closer at the Development Commission recommendation for views. So, so that's, that's what you guys brought up. There's a couple small changes that I wanted to go through with you guys this evening. One was the sustainability exhibit, which is Exhibit K, and it was actually in the back of that document on the, on the right-hand side, which is Exhibit, sorry for all the confusion on the exhibit labels, which was Exhibit H. It's a sustainability, basically, exhibit to the development agreement, and what happened late Friday was there were some edits that were proposed by Costco that we tried to get in the agenda bill packet, and they didn't quite make it. And really, there's, there's three areas of substance. This is why, you know, I didn't feel comfortable that this was just grammatical changes or typographical changes. One was applicability, where the, the language in the red line version of the new Exhibit K made it clear that this would be applicable to new office buildings. The innovations would be applicable to new office buildings, so the leadership and the technical innovation would be new office buildings. But then it basically made a commitment that if they did do a new retail space, that it would be lead equivalency, you know, and that's, that was new language that was proposed. And then the third piece was that there was some additional language added to the Transportation Management Plan and Commute Trip Reduction Program that made a commitment for Costco to continue to work on those, to improve those over the lifespan of the development agreement. So those were really the changes in the red line version of the sustainability exhibit, and my hope is that you guys would approve that red line version as part of the development agreement this evening. The other changes, there's one, I listed air rights, and there was some conversation this morning between the city attorney and the attorney for Costco, and the issue here is, as you, as you remember from the land plan that shows the new buildings, and Development Commission allowed for one sky bridge to cross Lake Drive. And the issue with this is that because Lake Drive will be a public right-of-way, the tool that we have to allow for a private structure to cross or to be within the right-of-way is a special use permit. And the issue with that is that's a renewable permit for the city, and, you know, if you can think about the risk for any developer to build a, a permanent structure across right-of-way and have to count on the city renewing that permit every year, it, it poses an issue. And so what we started to work through today, I think, was an alternative way to get that to happen. So I don't think there's any real changes of substance, it's just the tool by which we permit it was kind of what was a piece of conversation today, and I wanted to make you aware of that. And then I'm going to go ahead and jump into this one now, since I'm on other changes. So Councilmember Polly has asked, whoops, not that one. Let me, let me reorganize here. And focus, there we go. Sorry about that. I'm technologically challenged sometimes. So, so I'm going to scooch it back down a little bit, sorry for that. So this diagram, which shows the land plan, and as you can see, I can't do that, as you can see, those, those dashed lines in, in between the buildings were really intended to be connections. So these are basically walkways in between the buildings which would connect, this is the Creek Trail on the east, this is Lake Drive in the middle, and then this is the Pond Trail on the west side. And because of the way this was graphically represented, it leaves some ambiguity on whether or not those east-west connections actually connected to the north-south non-motorized facilities. And so because there was that ambiguity, and we talked this through with Costco, and they're okay with this edit, we're suggesting an edit to land plan condition number one, and what it would say is, and I can read a little bit of it to you, is, is a concept. So it says, however, the three east-west connections at building ends will provide pedestrian connections to the north-south public facilities, and that's the sidewalks and bike lanes, and the PPOA, which is Pickering Place Owners Association, facilities, and that's the Trail Pond and Creek Trail. So it's really just adding a clarification that, that, that those non-vehicular access ways are actually connected. So the east-west and the north-south, they all connect each other, so if you're walking through the campus, that there's a way for you to get kind of around without running into a fence or a hedge or some other kind of impairment. Okay. So that's it. That's, that's all I've got for tonight.
Councilmember Marsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where, I'm sorry, in which exhibit was that language clarified? The, the language you just discussed, I'm, I'm a little murky.
So I'm going to look to my partner in crime here, just in case I describe this incorrectly. So the Development Commission's recommendation, so that's Development Commission recommendation number one, condition number one from the Development Commission's recommendation. Since it's not any of the edited language, it was not part of any of the exhibits this evening, so it goes back to the, it's part of the land plan, so it's part of the actual development agreement without edits. So, so the original development agreement, Appendix D, Exhibit D is the land plan. The land plan has a staff report associated with it. The staff report has those conditions included with. So, so it is part of the Exhibit A from the October 6th council meeting agenda bill packet.
But it is not in Exhibit A in the packet that we have in front of us, is that correct?
So I'm going to look to the city clerk, because I don't know the answer to that. So was there an Exhibit A development agreement? I assume there was, since there was 187 pages in the packet tonight.
Yes, it was the same document that was provided at the October 6th meeting.
Okay, so it is.
Exhibit A.
Okay.
So sorry for that roundabout jaunt, but we've, we got.
What I was confused about is, my understanding is that the sustainability language would potentially, if the council chose, be a, be an amendment to the bill that's in front of us, but what you just described does not require any sort of amendment on the part of council.
I would ask that the council, so this is a change to the, so Exhibit A, it's a change to Exhibit A to incorporate a modified Condition 1 from the Development Commission. So it would, it would, it would need the council to include that if the council so chose to include that this evening as another amendment, as an additional amendment beyond the sustainability amendment. Did that make sense?
Yes. So what you, the, the city will be requesting two amendments to the bill that is in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a hard copy of that second proposed amendment?
I do. Would you like it?
Yes, I would.
I can take it off.
I guess, of course you have a hard copy because you showed it up on the screen. Thank you very much.
So now is time for council discussion. Councilmember Milligan.
At this time, I'd just like to ask a process question, responding to David Kapler's comment earlier. Keith, could you help me understand what the, and this follows up on Tolles' comments to, and what condition is the document now, and how does it get to its final condition when it gets recorded?
So what we do is, we keep track of all of these revisions that you guys are voting on, so that's why it was important to try and get it down to one document, but we ended up with a couple. So what staff will do after council takes action on this, assuming you approve it, if you don't approve it, I'm not going to do anything, but if you do approve it, what we will do is feed all those in, and then we will review that with. that with Costco, because both parties will need to agree that these edits all get put in. And then, once that happens, then the development agreement gets signed. So at the end of the day, the signed development agreement, the one that gets recorded on the property, has all of these edits incorporated into it. Did I answer your question?
Thank you. And I was just looking, just not getting there fast enough, about which party on the city who signs, who reviews it and signs it at that stage here.
So you guys direct the mayor to sign the development agreement on behalf of the city?
Other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, would it be the right time to entertain a motion?
It certainly would.
All right. Well, then, I would like to move to approve Resolution Number 2014 dash?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, approving the Master Site Plan Amendment for the Pickering Place Master Site Plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and I am assuming that it, oh. Questions or discussion on the resolution?
I have a follow-on question for Mr. Niven. Am I correct that the two proposed amendments that the city would like us to entertain is actually for the second motion, should we pass the first motion?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Council, is there anyone desiring to speak at this time, or are you ready to act? All those in favor of?
We're addressing the main motion at this point.
Yes.
The master site.
No.
Just the master site plan amendment.
The master site plan.
Okay.
We'll get to the development agreement, I'm assuming, just a little bit later. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2014-18, approving the Master Site Plan Amendment for the Pickering Place Master Site Plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Resolution Number 2014-19, approving the Costco Development Agreement and Site Development Permit Land Plan, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement subject to, one, provisions, proposed revisions identified in the council staff response memo dated October 9th, 2014, which is Exhibit F of Agenda Bill 6780, and, number two, additional changes identified in the Clarifications and Changes Report dated October 9th, 2014, Exhibit H of Agenda Bill 6780, and, number three, minor typographical and non-substantive edits identified, sorry, intended to improve clarity of the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
Before we move, may I move an amendment? I would move to replace the Exhibit K sustainability language with a number of edits that are outlined in an email that was sent by staff to the council on Sunday, October 12th, with an amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion on the amendment. All those in favor of approving the amendment as outlined by Councilmember Martsch signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have one more amendment pursuant to the conversation that we've just been having. And forgive me, I was attempting to, I'm having internet problems. So the revised language that was discussed and was shown on the screen and was entered or was presented by staff is to modify which section?
It's Development Commission Recommendation Number One on the land plan, which is Exhibit A to the development, Exhibit D to the development agreement.
All right. Let me see if I can do this. I move that we amend the Development Commission Recommendation Number One, which is in Exhibit D of the land plan, to include the language as specified earlier. However, the three east-west connections at building ends will provide pedestrian connections to the north-south public facilities, sidewalks and bike lanes, and Pickering Place, PPOA facilities, Pond Trail and Creek Trail.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on the Second Amendment. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amendment as stated by Councilmember Martsch signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Now, back to the original motion as amended, discussion or questions?
So normally, the maker of the motion would speak first, but I've been speaking a bunch, so I'll let somebody else start off.
Anyone desiring to speak? Councilmember Milligan, followed by Councilmember Polly.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tola. I wanted to take an opportunity to reflect on this experience we've been so embroiled in. Let's use a juicy verb. It's been an honor to work on this, and I've truly felt I know everybody else has to work on it on behalf of the City of Issaquah, but of course, it's on behalf of a greater body. It's for the state of Washington. It's such a big project that it's, I have often had to pinch myself and think, is this really what we're working on? So in that way, I've really enjoyed it. But it's been a lot of hard work, and I want to thank the staff especially, and the administration, your leadership, Mayor, and all, everybody here. Extra time, you said we had these three meetings for the city council, but indeed, that's just a small piece of the efforts that everybody has put in. And I felt that my concerns were well attended to, and I wanted to say that very clearly. Every time I had a question, it was responded to with sincerity and thoroughly. I also wanted to make a point that I had two big things going into this that I wanted to do, and I think that both things were accomplished, I'm very happy to say. One was to limit the development agreement, so that our central Issaquah plan and the code of City of Issaquah could carry the day and only put things in the development agreement that needed to be there. And I think the staff showed a lot of restraint in that. And another thing was to assure that the development agreement would stand alone. Another thing about pinching yourself when you're working with somebody like Costco, who's such a great partner and a great employer for our neighbors and a great place to shop, is that this development agreement goes with the land, and it has to be good with that arrangement whoever may be implementing it 20 years from now. So I felt that the staff worked very hard to fulfill that. And after accomplishing those big things, there are three main things that I enjoyed that we accomplished. One was providing our best employer an opportunity to grow in central Issaquah. It's great. It establishes a team to improve and expand our transportation capacity in the north Issaquah. And finally, finally, tonight, it creates the PED connections that we need in north Issaquah and a connection to the park. There are other issues that we didn't get to address, such as in the transportation plan to address the needs of a party in the room, especially Randy Bass. But I am confident, this isn't something we're dealing with today, but I'm confident in our city, that we will attend to that with honor and fairly deal with those other issues that are just around the edge of this development agreement. So I'm confident in that, too. And I wanted to just close with expressing my support for the development agreement, to thank Costco, where is that? There, the smiling face is sitting there. To work with us, it was great to work with you, and thank the staff, Lucy, Keith, everybody who spent those countless hours. Tell your family, you're almost on your way home. And I look forward to working with Costco and implementing this and bringing this to our city. So thank you.
Councilmember Polly.
Nicely said. Kind of hard to follow. I just wanted to quickly apologize for missing last week's meeting, but was glad to get back early last week, and again, pick up on the conversations that have been going on for months and months with staff and other people on the council about what's going on with the agreement, what do we want to see. What I ended up with last week was there were several things that were still on the table that were concerning to me, and I'm happy to say that they're resolved, and I like the way it worked out. I was very concerned about the agreement following the land, and worried that if we were to exceed the amount of land that Costco currently owns and wants to have under the development agreement, and Costco wants to lease, we could unintentionally, at Build Out, find ourselves with an entirely commercial area on the north side of the city. And that was not ever the intent or vision of the plan, and that language has been tightened up in this version, and I thought that's a great outcome. The other issue was, I was concerned that we wanted to make sure that now that we've committed to this vision of density, that we get the density that we're asking for on the floor. And another thing that was added in this version of the agreement is that all the new structures will meet the minimum far that is required in this area. So again, I was very pleased that that language was changed. My last two things are probably the most important to me, and Nyman did a good job of thanking everybody, but I just want to come back to the public that has showed up at our committee meetings and our council meetings and hammered it into our heads, including my neighbor, who's not here tonight, that we need to make this trail system work. We really do. Oh, hi, your neighbor.
Your neighbor is here.
He is here, actually. We need to make this trail system work. We need to connect this area. It needs to be walkable. It needs to be multimodal, and I'm happy with the changes that were proposed in the amendment tonight. So Keith, thank you very much. You actually was working on that today at about 4:30, I think. So that's great. And the last one is, the Development Commission expressed some concerns about views, and I took to heart some of the comments I got from Lucy this week when we met for two and a half hours one morning, about view preservation and view corridors and consideration of some of the Development Commission comments. And I then drove through that area again with some of Lucy's thoughts in mind. And there's, it's amazing to me how beautiful that campus is. Costco has done a wonderful job with beautiful architecture and wonderfully placed buildings, nice amenities all around. And the backdrop to that is the beautiful hills. We are so lucky to have Costco in our town, and Costco is lucky to have such a beautiful campus surrounded by green hills. I'm hoping that Condition Two, as recommended by staff, which is an adjustment to what Development Commission said, honors that, that peek-a-boo views are important. I've, this is, are important. I've been here for 20 years, and I still kind of gasp sometimes when I'm driving around town. So you have a chance with the design of building number four to really play off of that, and I really encourage you to do it. So very excited tonight about where we've ended up. Thank you.
Councilmember Martsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Lou stole my thunder. I really wanted to get that community piece as well. Obviously, staff and Costco have worked hard to address the concerns that have come up in this council, but also lengthy process in land and shore. If you're not familiar with this whole process, the reason that I made this motion is that this bill came through land and shore. And, you know, but the public sometimes sees a council that oftentimes doesn't have a lot of debate. If we don't have debate in this chamber, it's hopefully because the tough issues have been hammered out in committee. And I always want to take a chance to, or take the opportunity to encourage people to come to those committee meetings. And I don't want to say that I would let someone talk indefinitely, but in land and shore, it's a different kind of environment, and so we don't have any sort of a buzzer or timer. And usually, people do a good job of not, yeah, they do a good job with that. So the community had a large engagement in this, and let me pick a particular issue that really was heavily addressed in land and shore. One of the, there were a couple of issues that were really important to me. One of them was precedence, and making sure that this is not automatically the new de facto standard for future development agreements in the community. And because of that concern, some of the language was changed in a way that I believe will make it more clear and will provide future councils with an understanding of what we agreed to here today, if we should choose to pass this development agreement. The second, though, was sustainability. And anybody who has heard me get worked up about sustainability, I won't do that right now, but suffice to say, the language that we have in front of us today is very different than the language that we had when last we were at land and shore. And it's because the process brought forward how critical this was for the city. Costco has always had, has had a longstanding commitment to sustainability, and everybody understood that. But we also understood that it is such a key part of our city, that we needed to reflect that strongly in this bill. And is the language as strong as some people would like? Probably not. But it is, I assure you, very different. And you can go back and look at old council packets if you don't believe me. So I'm very excited about this. I am very excited about our, recommitting our enthusiasm for Costco and Costco reconfirming its enthusiasm for this community. Everybody knows that my two big things are workforce housing and living wage jobs. Workforce housing is already coming to the Valley. Living wage jobs, we will have more of those as a result of this agreement. So I'm very excited this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Go down the line, I guess. So I wasn't exactly sure what I was going to say coming in tonight, but the general impression that I got from the amendments between where we were before and where we are tonight is very positive. And that trend in the right direction for me is a very good thing. So I put together a few thoughts on this particular occasion, given the scope of this agreement and the fact that it's really a very, very big deal for Issaquah and for Costco. First, it ensures that a major employer remains an integral part of our community. It ensures that for years to come, when people around the country and around the world speak of Costco, it will be in connection with the words, quote, "an Issaquah, Washington-based corporation." Now, I want to turn specifically to the two issues I raised last week, transportation and sustainability. I'm satisfied, and I now understand, to the extent a non-engineer can, the methodology in the traffic analysis. And I greatly appreciate the help of Sheldon Lin, our Public Works Engineering Director, and Torsten Leenau, our consultant, who walked me through a lot of that during a conference call. And what's clear to me, apart from the methodology, is that we're going to face more congestion. Some of that congestion is going to be offset by improvements to Lake Simamish Parkway and the Pickering Development. But perhaps a continued rise in delays and headaches and frustration will finally push us towards the front-street interchange improvements and the overcrossing that we desperately need. One lesson I've taken away from this discussion is that the type of mega-road projects, like the north Issaquah roadway network, cannot be done without significant private participation, either voluntarily, like Costco's contribution, or involuntarily, like the LID we had originally planned to build the extra capacity. I firmly believe the city needs to refocus how our transportation is managed and take a page from the former NASA playbook of smaller, faster, and cheaper. To that mantra, I would add the word innovative. Now, this is something the city can do. This leads to my other topic, which is a paramount concern for environmental stewardship. I'm glad that Costco has heeded our call for a new appendix to this agreement that we see tonight. A tangible, demonstrable, energy-efficient, and forward-thinking development plan fits within the character of our city. My enthusiasm is somewhat tempered, however, because I personally believe the provisions of Exhibit K could go further. I remember it was last year that the president singled out Costco as a leader on the two other legs of the sustainability stool, which are economic and social sustainability. He said, quote, "We'll need our businesses, the best in the world, to set an example by providing decent wages and salaries to their own employees, and I'll highlight the ones that do just that, companies like Costco, which pay good wages and offer good benefits," end quote. Yes, Costco is agreeing to a technology and a leadership innovation, as they're called in the agreement. But when it comes to the third leg of the stool, environmental sustainability, wouldn't it be great if Costco said, you know, we only agreed to one of each of these things in writing, but we're going to step ahead, we're going to go above and beyond, and we're going to perhaps do two or more options on this list? I would point out that nothing in this agreement prevents Costco from doing better or more than what we have discussed. Costco can show not just our city, but other top businesses, how to create a campus that is not just another 20th-century office park. This is something that you, Costco, can do. This is something that you, Costco, can do. Now, some may ask, where's the housing in all of this? Where's the 21st-century vision, the central area plan? Well, I would say, on one hand, you could look at it as perhaps these things are left for future development. I think that viewpoint is ultimately self-defeating because it just passes responsibility for fulfilling the central area plan and reaching our urban growth targets to others, who in turn might pass that responsibility down the line, and pretty soon, we have nothing like the dreams we worked so hard to conceive. But, on the other hand, there is a vision in this development agreement, and the vision is for a vibrant urban corporate campus that will enhance the value of our community and what citizens can look at and say, this is something for us as Issaquah residents and for the region and for our state to be proud of. So, let's look at it as glass half-full going into this, with open arms and open eyes. In sum, as I view this proposal overall, today is a great day for Issaquah, and today is a great day for Costco. This agreement has my vote, but my sincere hope is that the days to come for both of us, as we serve our respective citizens and customers, are not just great, but legendary. This is something that we, together as partners, can do. Thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. As we work our way down the dais here, I was the one that spoke last week in regards to the fact that I was ready to move forward with the decision on this last month, or, excuse me, last week. I think there's been some wonderful changes to this particular piece, and to me, a couple of them, the first one is the bike and PED trail connections that we see. That was wonderful to see, that it was defined more clearly than it had been, and it's not sort of just so ambiguity out there, but there is some definition to it, and along with that definition comes a timeline attached to it. So, that timeline, I believe the fact that there is a recommendation in there that within 12 months, there will be a meeting to discuss the alternatives and how this is going to be working forward. The other piece that I thought was a nice addition, a very important addition to this final document, was conversation in regards to the sustainability additions, and they're all represented within this document, and we've heard some of them, so I don't need to step further into detail on those. Costco's have been, for as long as they've been with us, a fabulous community partner. They've supported so many different activities and elements within our community, and I all know they will continue to do that, that's just the way they do business, and it's fabulous to have a corporate, a very large world-known corporate entity coming to our community that we know will continue with those corporate, community responsibilities and their involvement in our community. So, I am now really ready to move forward with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So, I don't know how I cannot repeat some of the wonderful things that my fellow council members have said. I just have to say, wow, this really is a big deal, and I am thrilled to support this. It really is quite a statement that not only Costco is making, but also that this council is making. We look at this as a 30-year development agreement, but really, what we have, in my view, is essentially a permanent relationship, and that's very exciting because, as we've already heard, Costco is a, provides good jobs at good wages, a very, very well-respected employer, also very well-respected for their involvement and commitment to our community. Like my fellow council members have mentioned, all of my questions and concerns have been addressed and answered satisfactorily. My top three were, these aren't my only ones, but my top three were stormwater. I was not happy with the initial stormwater provision in the agreement. Pedestrian access on 10th was another big one for me, and then the trails issues that we've heard a lot about, and those have all been addressed very nicely in the DA, and I really appreciate all the hard work on those. I want to follow many of the comments and thank everybody who was involved. It's been quite an interesting process. I want to thank the staff, I know you've just really, really worked hard, particularly the last couple of three weeks, it seems to me like round the clock, and Costco for all your attention to all of the questions that everybody had, I thought you were very thoughtful in all of your responses in the way that you tried to deal with our issues thoughtfully, but in a way that also, of course, made sense for you. And my fellow council members have worked very hard, and also, I want to also, like Councilmember Pauli mentioned, the public, those few folks who came to all the meetings and really helped us understand what the community really thought was important in this agreement, and that was very, I think, very important to helping the whole process. The process was not ideal, and I think the reason that it wasn't ideal was because of the timeline, and which didn't, I think, allow initially everybody to do their best work, not staff, not council, not Costco, which really is what, in my opinion, necessitated the extra week, which, wow, gave us a lot, that extra time, what a difference that made, so I appreciate that. But, at the end of the day, I'm really, really proud of this agreement, and I'm really even more proud that Costco has chosen to be in Issaquah for the long, long term. So, thank you, Costco.
Council President Witterstein.
Thank you. I assure you, all the talented speechmakers have already spoken, because there's really nothing of substance that I can add regarding this agreement that hasn't already been said about, there's nothing I can add about the effort that staff and the community and Costco and others have put into it. I can't add, I echo, and I repeat all of that. I do want to add one thing, is I'm extremely proud of this council. It is tough to be looking at a deadline with a document of 180 pages and really believe that you are fulfilling your prime duty as an elected representative of the people of Issaquah and are doing the right thing, you know, for the citizens. And we came here last week, and it wasn't easy, but we wrangled another week out of this, and everybody, the people sitting here with me responded fabulously. There were very pointed response, questions, issues of substance that needed, they were identified, issues of clarity were identified, and I hope that that gave Keith and your staff and also something very concrete to work with, and I do appreciate those efforts, especially which started probably last Wednesday, and with Costco themselves in responding to that. As elected representative of the people, I think through your efforts, you can, I believe that the voices of the citizens of Issaquah have participated in the shaping of this agreement, and so, that response, the quality of that response and the timeliness of that response and every, is really something I'm very proud of. So, again, I echo, there's a lot of good work that's been put into this. I had top concerns, people have already mentioned them, and I do look forward to, you know, just the cleanup of the final document, and the timing of that's all very, very important. So, I do and will be supporting this agenda bill this evening.
Everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Are you ready to act on the motion? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2014-19, approving the Costco development agreement and site development permit for land plan and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement, subject to proposed revisions identified in the council staff response memo dated October 9, 2014, Exhibit F of Agenda Bill 6780, and additional changes identified in the clarifications and changes report dated October 9, 2014, Exhibit H of Agenda Bill 6780, and minor typographical and non-substantive edits intended to improve the clarity of the agreement, and the two amendments to the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. There being no further business to come before this special council meeting this evening, we are adjourned. Good job.